All righty, it is 6:01 on Monday, October 13th, and we are going to start our work session, study, special study session. I'm Rita Evans Becker, Board Chair, and we're going to go around, whoops. But before we go around and introduce ourselves, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Rockingsdale area schools is located on the homelands of the Dakota Anajibway people. We recognize the painful history of genocide and forced assimilation of the indigenous inhabitants of this land. We honor and respect the many indigenous peoples who live on and hold sacred these lands, and we stand with members of these nations to fight injustice in all of its forms. We uphold the preservation of Dakota Anajibway languages, land-based education, and tribal pride. And now, we are going to introduce ourselves as we go around the table. Rita Evans Becker, School Board.
Teri Stahl, Superintendent.
Brene Momo, School Board.
Kristen Hoheisel, Chief Financial Officer.
Anthony Williams, Executive Director of Community Education, Athletics, and Activities.
Caroline Long, School Board.
Maureen Mullin, Director of Facilities and Operations.
Bob McCall, Assistant Superintendent.
Amy O'Hara, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Ellen Bass, School Board.
Aviva Hillenbrand, School Board.
Keneke Wuto, School Board.
Thank you, and Annie Olson, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent at the School Board. Thank you, and generally, we have the people out there, as long as they're not like hundreds, so we'll go that way today.
Annie Schmidt, I'm a district parent. I have a child at C and at Fair Crystal, and also have one at Old. Annie has a birth, I am also a parent, and I was on the baby.
Katie Middlestat, a parent of an early adventurous child, and a community member, and on the vision team as well.
Brean Bass, Community Member, parent, vision team member.
Will Howard, Community Member, Activities Director of Rockingsdale for High School.
Thank you for being here. All righty, let's get on to our purpose and our agenda. I'm going to turn it right over to our Superintendent, Dr. Stahl. Excellent, thank you very much. And reading the land acknowledgement was certainly fitting always, especially today on Indigenous Peoples' Day, so thank you for that. The purpose of our study sessions, and even this special study session, is for board members and administrators to come together to share information, and tonight we'll be engaging in a lot of conversations about the statutory operating plan and a bit about the reimagined 2030 work as well. As we continue to support the board, provide information to the board in the decision-making that they're ultimately going to need to make at the board table. So as we look at the board working document that we have in every study session so that we're really transparent with the roles of the school board, as well as how tonight's specific agenda fits into that, you'll note the highlights fall under the board's governance role of the operation of oversight. Specifically, one of the tasks that we've known the board needed to do this year was to approve the statutory operating debt plan. And then also, the other piece that they'll be taking a look at this evening, y'all will, is monitoring and using enrollment trends to plan strategically for current and future facilities, staffing, and budget decisions. So again, this fits in the board's governance role of operational performance oversight and organizational direction. As we begin tonight, we just want to give a bit of context as we think about the agenda for tonight. So I'm going to use the language of some of the board developments that y'all have used with Dr. Dave Webb and the I-Rod process. So the "I" stands for information. So today, y'all have gotten a lot of information. You've received a lot of information from the vision team. This is the first time the board's going to have an opportunity to share and discuss some of that information. You also have received some information from the administration for tonight's study session. There were a few additional questions that came last week. There was a question, I believe, around open enrollment numbers. We provided that information to y'all tonight, as well as a few additional questions that came in from board members over the weekend, and we provided that information to y'all mid-afternoon-ish. So if you haven't gotten a chance to look at that email, there's a lot more information that was requested at that time. So for the next couple of hours, or however long the board wants to engage, we're going to start with some of your reactions, and having a chance for a board discussion around your reactions and reflections to the vision team recommendations. We had a put-in offer out if the board had any questions for vision team members. That was something that was discussed at the board table a few weeks ago, I think the night actually, September 23rd, when the recommendations came forward. There aren't too many questions at this point. I'm confident the offer stands with members from the vision team that if there is a time in the future that board members would like some vision team members present to answer questions, they'd be happy to do that. So tonight, we get a chance to hear some of your reactions around that. We also want to be sure that we give board members a chance to share some of your insights and your thoughts as you have heard recommendations about Vision 20. What else have you been thinking about yourself? So I did put the offer out to board members to give you some time to reflect and think over the weekend and be prepared if you have any thoughts and insights that you'd like to share regarding your thinking around vision. After that, after that discussion with the board, and that's kind of more of the vision forward, in that there might be some statutory operating debt thinking and some conversations specific around site consolidation, but we're really providing some space in this opening hour or so just to be able to react to what you've heard, because the board hasn't had the chance to do that. And then we'll back up a bit, back to the immediate decision-making that the board needs to make in the next couple of months around the statutory operating debt plan, including starting to look at some of the considerations around site consolidation. So again, provided a lot of data for you to take a look at. We'll certainly walk you through, answer questions, and provide additional context around that. We'll review the timeline, we'll review the extended timeline. Really, that why, again, we want it around the board and our entire community in understanding why we're here, and why we're having these conversations, and why ultimately the board is in a position to make these decisions. With that, then, that data will provide additional information for y'all as we take a look at moving forward toward eventually some options for consideration around that site consolidation. It's our goal, by the end of our time together tonight, for the board ultimately to be in a place where you've been able to ask questions, seek additional information that you might need, so that you are prepared, and we are actually have direction and are prepared to work between now and next Monday night, and to come forward with some potential options for discussion. So with that rather long introduction, I just want to open up some space for y'all to what have you been mulling over since September 23rd, where we heard some visions, recommendations from a community team that has worked for eight months? So what are some of your reactions, reflections? And then ultimately, as we have this conversation, what are other ideas and thoughts that you've had along the way that may be different, maybe similar to what you've heard from the community? This is our chance. Any hands to talk about reactions?
Well, a couple reactions, nothing real long or in depth, because as we go through this process, I'm interested in the information that we receive in detail and then getting into the report kind of that way. So, but I really felt that the report was very, very, very thorough. I felt that the folks that put together the report and would be experienced, experienced the emotion of it, experienced points of reality. I think it was a very experience-based sort of process over eight months, and therefore, I was really impressed with that. It wasn't just people sitting in a room and crunching numbers, which is what we didn't have. But where I went to in this whole thing was the what sort of dreams did I not see? I mean, and I haven't seen any of the details of all of this. So I'm just going to put out my one dream as we move forward with this. And I would like to see us do something that we know is a problem for teachers, and that is new teachers coming into the profession, how can you best keep them? How can you tie them to your district? And I'm going to throw out that I would really love to see us utilize excess space as housing for new teachers, especially those teachers in our first five years, because from my understanding, you really don't get paid well in those first five years. And if we could help with housing, I think that we could help. I think that's part of the revolution of how do we move forward in education, because we live in a society where no one can even afford to rent a house or an apartment. And if you can't find one, maybe you're halfway around, you know, very far away from where you work. So that's my dream in this, that we might even have the space to do something way out of the box, which is look to recruit new teachers coming in by providing them with housing in those first five years. And that's it. I just look forward to getting through the process. I'm really pleased with what I saw. And what I'm hearing right now from people in the community where I live is a lot of, wow, it's about time. It's about time we come up with a plan. We needed a plan. So I'm not even really finding any resistance out there with people, so good job, team.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else have a reaction or their own vision that they would like to speak on?
I don't know.
Director Bass, do you?
Well, I would really like to see, and I have not seen, options. And that's kind of what I'm used to reacting to. So one of the things I'm hoping that we will get is a couple of different scenarios. We actually have one scenario presented to us, and my comments to the vision team haven't really changed from the time I said on the other day. And that is, I appreciate the effort they put into it. I think that given the scope, I came to learn that they had a scope within which they were to function. So within the scope they had, there are many, it kind of precludes the opportunity to have a lot of different options, in my opinion, because they're only looking at a certain set of data. It's not a criticism, that's an observation. And so based on that, and I'm thinking about this process and hoping that this process will yield some options, because only one option or vision has been promoted, and I think that the numbers that might go along with other visions should be produced, because it's only then when you really get the full scope of what might or might not be possible. And so I'm looking forward to receiving that kind of information. And many of my comments and questions that I had, I had about eight, the questions that I have have been answered in part, not in totality. I feel like it's an iterative process, so that's also an observation. Not necessarily criticism, but it's a statement about the current state of the information that I feel like I have. And so it will inform the final vision, the final product. So without those kinds of inputs, it's pretty hard to get to a final product. And for me also, besides the regular routine and expected things that one does when you are facing statutory operating debt, the mechanics that I'm sure you're working on, those mechanics are independent of anything we have to do, except review it and make a decision about if there are some decision points, what are they? So I'm not so worried about the statutory operating debt, because the framework of education kind of has a formula, and we have to follow it. But how that intersects with the future of this district, I'm keenly interested in. And that's why I say options, because we have, of course, any number of different options that might come forward. And many of the good ideas that came through with the vision team's work, that's the kind of foundation for what community's feeling and thinking, and they've shared that with us, so that will be a foundation. But the laws need to be put out. There are no walls without the dollars, without the, you know, looking at the geographic layout, without the board factoring the demographic trends and the capacity we currently have, and the cost of any different option. The board has to have all of that information to make a decision. You know, the eight months that the vision team had, we don't have that runway. We have, we're already met up over November, December, in the midst of holiday season. That is a reality. And so in order to make a good decision that will serve this district in the long term, that is our job. And so in order for us to do our job, and for me, and I'll just be for myself, in order for me to do my job, that's the kind of data that I'm looking for. And thank you for sending the answers to some of my questions, Superintendent. They really kind of have to do with capacity, with numbers, with buildings, and where we are. And one of the questions I had specifically had to do with any vision that looked at the future in terms of elementary. Because I'm into the future, the future of this district with regard to the offering that we have at elementary level. If we're going to build something state-of-the-art, build to the future, that's my thought. And if we build to the future, which we need to do, all of those concerns that we have about the margins at the edges of our district geographically, the loss of students that we are having across the system, and the good programs that we have that can be problematic injuries, those are all of the kind of thoughts that are in my world. And so, you know, so I don't have a lot of specificity as I talk about this, but I just want, you know, I'm just being transparent about where I'm coming from. And I actually printed up a couple of the questions and the answers that I received. And I'll stick them over here, just one page, and you're going to have it and do whatever, because it's not a secret. This community owns this district, not seven board members, not the administration, it's the community. And so I'm happy with being accountable to the community and hearing what the community has to say. And a community of 10,000 or 100,000 people, it's important to have our listening ears open and to have two-way communication, and to talk about the things that we need to have. So that's kind of the things that I've been thinking about. I've got quite a bit of time to think about it. So that's kind of where I'm at, and people root for others if they have to, if us.
Thank you, Director Bass. Other reactions or visions from other board members?
Well, I've been doing a lot of the, and I've done some research. I have a lot of reluctance about the idea of one big high school. You know, really, in some of the research I've seen, an ideal high school size is four to 500 students. I don't know, I mean, that sounds really small to me, but... And some of the things I know is that big schools exacerbate racial inequities and make it harder for students to develop adult relationships. It's harder to, because it's just harder for kids to cultivate those relationships. Adults don't have the time. They can be really top-heavy, which then makes, in terms of administration, which makes them less efficient financially. There's fewer opportunities for students to be involved in things because of, you know, just there's only so many teams and such. And they're less able to be responsive to student needs because they can't pivot as easily just because they're big organizations, right? But what I've seen is a model, and I think it was talked about a little bit and alluded to slightly, and this is something I've researched a little bit, but it's sort of the idea of several small schools sharing a campus so that they can utilize, they can share electives, they can share common spaces, right? So you can make use of some of these amenities, right? And that way, though, but you still have that small school environment. And I would be really interested in looking into that. And then that keeps the benefit of the small schools, right? Where the kids get those adult relationships, they get those opportunities. They get the opportunity to rise up and be seen and be connected to adults, but they don't have any of those, you know, kind of downsides of being in a big school that they have the upsides of the amenities, right? So they get, they can all share that cafeteria, they can share the tennis court, they can share the pool, whatever those amenities are, right? And they can share electives. So maybe a few kids from each school want whatever the elective is, but there's enough critical mass to have, I don't know, a manga art class or whatever it is, right? So that was very interesting to me, because I am very worried about that, because that's what we hear about when kids go from middle, you know, from elementary to middle school, right? The kids are getting lost, the kids are getting, you know, they don't, that's the big fear we hear from parents, that's what you see. That was why I didn't want my kids to go to a giant high school, right? So that was one fear, and then was backed up a little bit by the research. Although I would say the research is not definitive by any means. It kind of goes both ways. It can slice both ways, depending on your kid and everything else. The other thing is, you know, as I was listening to parents from C during the listening hour who came, because they were predominantly parents from C the other night, one of the things that really struck me is one parent said, you know, my kid was in another RDL school, and I was asked to come read. They asked parents to come read, and I was the only one who came to read. And then now I'm at C, and every parent wants to come read. And that's exactly the, both the beauty and the problem with these magnet schools, right? These magnet schools pull involved parents, because now I can guarantee you at the original elementary school this parent was at, now when the teacher asks for someone to read, nobody's coming to read, right? So we're pulling involved parents out of these elementary schools, and we're exacerbating inequities. So we're making the system worse for everybody else by creating these magnet schools. And I understand also at the same time, as a parent, right, you do your best for your individual child. So I'm trying to say that this is both the beauty and the problem with magnet schools. And I want to acknowledge that as a parent, you're going to always do the best for your kid, and I don't blame anybody who does that, because you should. But at the same time, as a system, we're creating a system where we're siphoning off engaged parents and putting them all in one place, and then leaving other schools without support systems. So how do we create these schools where parents want to stay and be involved, and we're not siphoning them off, right? And one of the thoughts I had was, for example, Minnetonka has, they don't have a Spanish immersion school, but they do have Spanish taught at all their elementary schools, right? Which I think is kind of where we're going with the whole arts and engineering piece at all the schools. But I think we really need to be thoughtful about how do we engage people and how do we help them understand and want to be in their home schools and connecting and building their home community? And so I don't know what the answer is to that, but I wanted to put that out there in the space, that that is the downside of magnet schools. It pulls people, it magnetizes, it pulls all these really engaged families out of our other schools. And I think we really need to think about how do we get people back into our other schools? And I think we really need to think about how do we get people back into our other schools and spread those wonderful engaged parents, like that one dad who wanted to read in his kid's class, and back into our other schools. So that was just a musings of mine, that's not. But I'm particularly concerned about the high school piece right now.
Director Wong?
Yes. So I guess one of the things, I wrote down some of my thoughts here that I had was, so it calls for closures and cuts, but it doesn't say anything about staffing reductions, and that would be inevitable with closures in right-sizeding buildings. It's almost certainly that we would have a reduction in force. So what will those cuts to staffing look like? And students and families care about the humans that work with their students. And so when we're thinking about, you know, staffing, you know, what's the plan that we'll have that meets and addresses the needs of these relationships that have been built between families, students, and the staff that work with those kids? And what would this mean for developing something where we can create that without having to move families around too much and staff around too much? I did like, you know, that we are not talking about increasing class sizes. I think class sizes is a definite draw for families and having smaller class sizes is definitely something that I hear all over states that parents want for their kids. I'm just wondering too about suggestions or giving a window of opportunity for upfront investments that might need to be put into place. Would this be over the next five years, you know? What's the state of urgency for implementing it or all of it or parts of it? Also wondering if, what will happen with the excess sites? Will they be liquidated? Will closing sites be sold off, torn down, repurposed? How do we prevent charter schools from using these buildings if they are sold? Also curious about how this plan will be supported by local government entities and any community partnerships with our district? To what extent can those relationships provide some of the needed upfront investments? Redrawing enrollment boundaries. So I've had some experience with this, being a Minneapolis public school teacher, and redrawing those boundaries that can be very personal for families, for the community. And it's very sensitive, and it can also often feel very divisive too. That is one thing that I noticed in Minneapolis, that at times the redrawing of boundaries felt very divisive. So the plan calls for this change specifically. So what are the core elements to that plan for drawing those boundaries? And what are the implications of this? And what will these implications be for students, families, and community members whose boundaries will change? So open enrollment, depending on which schools are closed, we might see a decrease in students coming from surrounding districts. So I, I'm wondering too, what are the surrounding districts of our different schools? And what might that impact be on those surrounding schools with their neighboring districts? How will we be improving community understanding of the plan? So the report also called for transparency. So how are we going to be forthcoming about the information so that the core elements of the plan are understood by the community, that there is transparency? And giving the community time to critique whatever this plan might be? And how are we going to be forthcoming and give it, and give the information in a way where there's no surprises with next steps or outcomes for the community? So two of the priorities that were named in the report, I would definitely like more specific detail on each of those priorities, along with who's going to lead each of those priorities. So that's where I'm at right now, there's still a lot of questions that I feel need to be answered.
Which priorities?
All the priorities in the report.
I said two of the priorities.
Of the priorities, of the priorities needed in the report.
Thank you.
Yep, for now.
Okay, hi, Jennifer. So I was very interested in what the visioning team had to say, appreciated their work, loved the ideas. And so my vision is kind of a mashup of my experience as a principal in a school that drew hundreds and hundreds of kids from Robbinsdale. And my experience, I went to the University of Helsinki and studied Finnish schools while I was a principal. So some of the ideas are there. So some of this might stick to the wall and some might not, but this is what I'm thinking for the leaner version of, the leaner, better version of 281. Spanish immersion grows, if we're keeping it, then we need to grow it. Also, I would like to see Spanish in every elementary school, starting with kindergarten or pre-K. Love, love, love having preschool in every elementary school. When I was an early childhood teacher in the district, we had it in several schools and then it kind of moved away from that. It should be in all the home schools, and we should have parent education in each of the elementary schools also. That way we get them from first being a member of their community school, in their neighborhood school. Love the stronger arts and innovation idea. And I also think we need, let's see, a strong, a strong community in all of our neighborhoods. Pre-K and parent education in every building. I would like to see gardens and outdoor spaces in every school, pre-K through 12. Summer adventure club, give mom, or some of the gardens or parent, or community volunteers, which brings me to much more community, we need a focus on getting more community volunteers in and community partnerships and partnerships with corporations in the community. I think that, that will make us stronger. The hands-on experiential learning, big time. More breaks, more recess, more outside time for all of the kids. All-school community meetings, building the community feeling of the schools and filling every day at every school, the entire school has the morning meeting altogether. And it only lasts like 15 minutes. Also, they go outside every hour for a certain amount of time. But enhanced community partnerships and volunteers. I'd like to see one of the closed buildings turned over to community, add as a community center. It could be for rentals, also bringing in money, community theater, community classes. Let's see, I would like to see partnerships with farmers, one or more, for farm-to-table in our schools. And then the school gardens also providing food in our schools. And trees planted at our school might include palm trees or other fruit trees. Focused community building work at every school. All of the schools maybe have parent academies also. Just much more community building to make the parents and the families feel really about, and it's in their neighborhood school, and so it builds the community. Build on what we're doing with community schools and freedom schools ideas that works. I love the idea of multi-age classrooms and teachers looping. We probably need some people to do grant writing. Let's see. Question about one high school. I have a granddaughter that will be coming to high school here and I don't want her to get lost. And so I want to be sure that there's like either academies or schools or something that makes her feel like she's not getting lost in a big school. I think that's, those are some of my musings. Anybody else have something come into their minds of any reactions or anything that they were going to say and didn't before we move on? Yes?
Here, when you go, my grandchildren are up at Centennial School, Circle Pines playing. And their model is to not have magnet schools or English schools. And they have one high school, their elementary school, freedom of the middle school, freedom of the high school. And they're in a model where in elementary school they have their core studies. And then if you have an interest in C or STEM or arts or whatever, they introduce all of the students to that in more like after-school, afternoon program. And then they have different chapters, different, so by the time they come out of elementary school, they've been well exposed to the various disciplines beyond core learning. And when they get into middle school, it's again the morning time of core learning and in afternoon by, either by quarter or semester, is when they can go into C or go into a STEM program or go into an arts program. So again, it's further exploration of all of them. So they haven't slotted these kids into one specific school for the course of their career. And then when they get into high school, then they, because I have a ninth grader at Centennial High School. They have robust performing arts schools. They have, again, the same model where you've got the core classes. And then again, more of a pathway into the other classes. So that my grandkids have been there since kindergarten. And of course, even though they may not be in all the classes with their kids, now they've met a whole bunch of people on the way to middle school and to high school. And their, their buildings are, and the other thing, that was the other thing. Their lunch program even in for the high school is three lunch periods a week. They, these kids don't have to eat in the cafeteria. There are various different lunch clubs set up and they can go to various different club things. They're not allowed to go into the gym with food, which we, which my grandson understood. So they go off into various pods and different things and do whatever. So again, what I've been really impressed with, with their education has been the constant exposure to the various disciplines and, and yet with concentration as they get a little older into high school. So I'm not as concerned, I'm watching it in action up in Centennial High, up in the Centennial School District. And I'm not sure how big they are, but they're also a robust quality school system that was implemented years ago. So yeah, that's just an experience that I had.
As I, I don't know if I mentioned it, I really support us being an arts and innovation district. I think, and I agree about magnet schools. If we could have those parents in their home schools being the leaders, they would have the communities. And they would, I mean, whatever school you're at, you love the teachers and.
Director Bass?
I don't know, we don't have a chance. So I like the idea of a magnet district, not magnet schools, a magnet district. Because if we have to close some of the, we have to close something. And so if we have to close something, and if we're really looking toward being a magnet district, I think many of, some of the ideas that I've heard some directors talk about tonight can be infused into that if that's deliberate. But I really do think that the buildings that remain, the elementaries that remain, I don't necessarily agree with growing Spanish immersion. You know, because I feel like if we really are going to invest in really trying to make, we have a couple of different models that are quite robust, that have been quite successful. If we're really going to invest in those and support them being theaters, institutions of knowledge or professional development for their colleagues, I think that, I heard Director Wong talk about some cross-pollinization. Because the training that people need to have, some of those other kinds of things, some of the remaining elementaries that we have will have to be training theater-inspired schools. This vision I have, not reality. But I think some of the ideas that we've heard about can be infused into those, those programs that we do have. And that we may, you know, once we do what we're going to do, close what we need to close, because something's got closed, you know? And what it does, I really think it's important to have some, some, when I think about the arts and innovation, what I think about is an arts, math, environment, magnet district. Because all of those things are vital to the future of the students. I think without some substance, and I think I've said this before, to innovation, innovation can be what anybody thinks. And I think if we have the specificity around those things that are currently, right now, until things change again, they're the required kinds of things that schools need to produce according to what the state, the Fed, and everybody else says. There are standards that have to be met, and they change, shift and all of that. But in order to have that, to have an anchor for staff, so they're not trying to figure out, how am I going to be innovative? Being very clear about what's expected and then preparing the staff to actually be able to meet those requirements is going to be vital. Because if there's not a curriculum for innovation, and without a curriculum for innovation, if there's no organizing principles around that, it's just a crapshoot. And I don't think that, I think we owe our teachers more than that. We're already throwing a lot of, we'll say we're going to have this new arts and innovation, you know, math. We don't really have, know what that is. But I agree with many of the comments that some directors have said about this large size of a, of a school. How can we, even within the months, if we have the two high schools remaining, how can we pod and have a notion of pods or something like that? We've done schools over the schools for years, that, that's known. So I mean, those are the kinds of things, I think some of the good ideas that people are talking about can be infused. But I think the overarching vision really kind of has to be clarified. Because innovation, what does that mean? I think it has to be, I love the ideas about environment, let's just call it out. I love the idea of them up math, let's just call it out. You know, because math and science go hand in hand. If we're going to do the arts, they can inform all of that. But I think without a clear-cut framework around it, I worry that we'll get lost. And particularly when I look at, you know, and everybody says, don't look at scores, don't look at scores. Well, everybody else is looking at scores and many people are moving out of this district because they're saying, we don't like those scores. You know, I mean, obviously wouldn't, but they are, you know? So I think we do have to look at scores, I think we do have to look at academics, I think we do have to have a curriculum and rigor. And how we do that is having, choosing a framework that is understood by everybody. Antiquity is not where it's at. I like a lot of the great ideas we bring around this table, so, you know, I don't know how feasible they are. That's where you guys come in. You know, but.
Director Wood?
Yeah, I think for me, in the framework of the I-Rod, I'm still in that information gathering stage. I went to a high school that was fairly large, but we had screens, like Director Viva was saying. So even though the freshman class, maybe 300 students, within that 300, we had SAT classes within that, so nobody will, but none of us felt lost, right? So to me, having one high school, I think is a very welcoming idea, depending on how we frame it and what we do within that program. I'm just curious what the community is thinking right now. So a lot of good ideas have been thrown around, and I think they will all work. But how do we finance all of that? What is the community willing to take? So I seem to be a little quiet because I'm still in that information gathering stage. I want to hear more from that survey once it comes back to us. And also what is the administration thinking with this information that is in front of us? I mean, if one high school doesn't work, then what? Can we stay with the status quo, it's not working? So what are the alternatives can we come up with, right? Those are things that I'm thinking about right now.
Anybody, any last words from anybody else?
And as our options comes in, that's why I love the idea of options. This scenario, that scenario, the other scenario, and what's the cost? So that's why options are important.
Absolutely. Director Hoover?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I just wanted to say too about, I think one of the things I really like to... I think one of the things I'd really like to focus on as we have the opportunity to do this is to interrupt inequities, right? Because we know that there are inequities between our high schools, between our middle schools, right? Between different parts of our district. We have a really good opportunity then to interrupt those. And the other thing too about big schools, that there tend to just be more behavior issues, right? Because you have more people in a space, more behavior issues. Because you have more people in a space, right? And then that just lends itself to more interactions that can turn together. And so that's another thing that came out of some of that research I did. But I really think that we have a really great opportunity to kind of reset some of those inequities that have been perpetuated by the way our, and some of it's just the demographics of the way it's spread out, right? Right? Just, but by the socioeconomic status of the different communities in our district, but also the white lines of the.
Thank you. All right, it's back to you.
Well, thank you for that. And I know there's a lot of pieces of this. We heard a lot from our community team. Director Wutu, I too am interested to see when we get that community survey back because we've got a lot of options. And at the end of the day, what's going to really make the difference here is what the board and the community decide that they want this district to be. We know from an administrative lens that we need to right-size the district and make sure that we are financially stable. I'm also surrounded by a team who is seeking instructional excellence and opportunities and making sure, just like all of you, making sure that our kids have the absolute best possible education and opportunities so that they can determine what it is in their lives that they want to do. To live really happy and productive lives. So there's lots of things that are going to come out. Director Bassett, I appreciate you coming around, around, we need clarity with that. We don't know yet. That's part of what all of this is. We've got some recommendations that the community group, after a whole lot of study, brought back to y'all and said, here's, here's what we think as we look at the studies, we look at enrollment. Things that we think would be really good to consider moving forward. And then I think that question of, we know that we can't do some of this without a bond. And that's maybe where some of those options are going to come in after we see the community survey to say, okay, if this, if not this. And again, it's going to depend, you know, on what the board ultimately decides, what our community decides. But I think the other thing that I just heard from you all, along with a whole lot of amazing things that I want our kids to be engaged in, is what are some immediate decisions? And what's some of that data that we need to make those? Director Bassett, a lot of your questions, as you said, really were about some of these continued enrollment. You know, we're focusing for tonight a lot on our actual schools. You brought us back to the Crystal Learning Center, New Hope Learning Center, some of those things as well, which certainly are a part of our entire portfolio. So thank you. This conversation isn't far from over. So it's going to be really important for us as we continue to build options and bring things forward that we hear, what you're thinking, so that we start knowing collectively what will be supported at this table and what won't be. So thank you very much for that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McDowell as he takes us through some of the Phase One and brings us back to decisions for the next two months, not beyond that. So we got to, we got to go out a few years, months, now we're going to pull you back in for some immediate work.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start with right, right in that theme, short-term timeline. This is a slide you've seen many times, you're going to see it, I would imagine, every, every work that we do with you here in the next. It's just so that we have an idea of where are we in this process. And we, while we do need to dream and defocusing on what can be, what's right in front of us is the statutory operating debt plan, which is driving a reduction in our current footprint as part of that solution, part of that long, longer plan, how does that work? And so as you can see here, our circle identifier hasn't changed much since last week. It's exactly the same spot. Because we're going to go slowly, go fast and try to get you chunks of information so that hopefully, even though we have a short-term timeline, the conversation's going to feel like tonight, where we have information, we can chew on it, we can bring it back, we can revisit it and kind of go as slow as we need to go, but as fast as we need to go in order to get that January 31st document done. So here's where we are tonight. The goal tonight is, has always been and still is to present more detailed information towards recommendations. The idea and our hope is that a week from now, the 20th, we will be able to present some of what Director Bassett is asking for, which are some initial options based on what we know at this point in time to start chewing on. By no means are they the final pieces, but they are the beginning of. We've got to start somewhere to start getting those, what do we like, what don't we like? What do we need, what don't we need? What jives, what doesn't, all of that. And you'll see that the timeline really hasn't changed from the last time we put this up there. We're leading up to that January 20th vote. We are hoping that by November 24th, have the board here informing the public, here's what we think we need to do and prepare the public for public input, and then the board taking that. As far as the extended timeline, so this is where it blends together. It's where it blends together. On that extended timeline, we're in the first part of the first phase of the timeline, right? Work on the SOD plan, work on reducing this footprint through initial building closures or consolidations or reconfigurations. That highlighted piece is where we are tonight. The rest of that enlarged font is where we're moving next. You can see all the rest of the phases are still really small. And that's because we have to figure this first part out before we really can dig in and consider what can be later on. With all of that, we talked a lot this last week administratively and we thought it was really important just to put this out in this space. We are aware and we need to anticipate that this work, no matter what district we're in, is complex. It's clunky and it is at best imperfect. It just is. This isn't necessarily the most fun work for most people. But it's work that has to be done in order to figure out how do we get to the dreaming stage. We are going to, along the way, as decisions are even proposed, as potential decisions, for different groups to feel this experience of the pond is shrinking, my building is going away, my program is going away, that's going to happen. And so we need to plan for that. As was brought out earlier, we need to prepare for what it is that people are going to experience. We're also going to have competing interests. As we throw out options, as a board, as an administration, people will begin voicing what they think, what they feel, what they want, what they don't want, and they'll come to the table with that. And so we just need to be ready for that and open to listening. I read that word a couple nights ago. Opening to listening to what are they really telling us? And what is the stuff that we need to take back and maybe read to them? Some of those statements, we need to anticipate, they're pretty strong, right? It's going to get strong. And that's okay. Everything has a trade-off. Everything will have a trade-off. There will be direct and indirect impacts to students through this process, right? And to the point of, while it might be someone's school that is impacted by this decision, it's definitely going to impact a person that this decision, this person knows. And they're going to have a conversation at church, at the grocery store. There's going to be direct and impact, direct impacts to everyone as we go through this process. And it will impact staffing, programming and boundaries in addition to just physical plans. It will. That said, as you just spent almost the last hour, it's the ground-setting for possibilities and opportunities. We need to keep that in mind and keep that, that eye on the prize, that it is the way to get to the possibilities and opportunities, even though we have to do part of it as part of SOD. So why are we focusing just on consolidations for '26, '27? One, we've already established the fact that we have to reduce our footprint. We have much more space than what we need. And our enrollment is not what it used to be. And the aroma projection doesn't create a picture of us getting larger. The second is that this is a major financial piece of working out the SOD plan. If we accept those two pieces of why we need to focus on '26 and '27, then we can push those through two filters. One is how do we make decisions that are not just efficient, but that are also effective, the most effective, and they don't miss the equity lens? That balance between those three. Everything we do, we should be pushing through that filter. Does it, does it make sense? And then at the same time, back to the last hour, is the decision desirable, feasible and sustainable? Does it make sense for where we want to go? Can we actually pull it off and have a plan to get there? And will it stick once we get there and not just go away? Will it not be one of these, this two shall pass scenarios? If we can stay focused in the next few weeks on those two items and push everything through these lenses, we'll get to something that'll make sense for the opportunities and possibilities. Just we have to work through that process. All right. Now if we start to get into the meat and potatoes of it, so '26, '27 is the focus once again. As we start talking about building considerations, consolidations, closures, there's really two sets of decision points. There's primary and there's secondary. The primary has to do with capacities and utilization of current sites. Our actual enrollment, our anticipated enrollment. What are the operational costs? Meaning not just what's the cost is to operate now, but potential savings, trade-offs, all that kind of stuff. What are the building conditions? Are there buildings that make sense to say, no matter what, this building has to come offline? Are there buildings where we say, it's not in the best shape, but we could use it for this next phase to get us through until we get to what we want to do? Or are there buildings that, that building's in beautiful shape? What can we best do with it so that all the way along, we don't neglect it? So that at the end of this, it doesn't become the worst building on the block? We have to, we have to keep that in mind. So focusing on all of our buildings. And that means not just buildings that kids are in right now, it's buildings like this building, this building, it's all of it. And then lastly, this was brought as well, location. Where does a building live? What's the people of our district that that building serves? Who are the population that it could serve? Does it make sense to have two buildings close together, like all that goes into location? So those are the primary decision points when we start talking about the conversation we're going to get into tonight. Then we have all the secondary things, right? All the related stuff. We take this building offline, now we got boundary issues. Does it make sense? Do we want kids crossing that highway because now there's not a building over here, right? All of that that comes into it. Transportation folds into that. Will it impact bus routes? Will it decrease bus routes? Demographics. We don't want to create racially isolated schools. We don't want to do something that will impact balance and demographics for our kids. Future decisions. Our plan for '26, '27 has to be a solid plan regardless of whether we pull off a bond or we don't pull off a bond. It has to be sustainable without that mechanism for future funding because we can't guarantee that will happen. And so we can't make closures and changes that then will leave us in a worse situation if a referendum doesn't pass. So we have to stay really close and tight around this '26, '27 decision. And that leads into the impacts and trade-offs. What we'll do in the future, will we be leaving anyone out? Will we be impacting unintentional boundaries outside of the district and losing more than what we would anticipate to lose because of our decision? And then finally, the program. We don't want to take ourselves out of a building that then is going to cause us to have to put more money into another building because we now can't do the program like we want. So that's, that's what's living behind the scenes, all of that stuff. And it will be our job to try and keep all of this in front of all of you as we move forward. And hopefully, these primary and secondary decisions will start sparking some more questions that you have, the what about this, what about this, what about this? Because there's always the potential that when we're working on it day in and day out, we don't look at something. We might be too close to it. To guard against that at every chance we can, we administratively have developed a guiding change document for working through this process. So I want to share this with you and there's a copy in this binder so that you can see, here's how we are guiding our work. The current reality is nothing new to all of you. It's where we are right now, right? And it goes through everything from statutory operating debt to declining enrollment to the fact that the reimagined Vision 2030 has given a presentation that you've talked about. We also went through unacceptable means. We aren't going to propose a plan that will intentionally create inequities in learning opportunities. We're not going to give, we won't do that to you. We will not create recommendations that are not sustainable, feasible or desirable. From our perspective, we will do our best to bring stuff to you that meets that criteria. We will not go against anything that's related to state statute as we bring that to you. We will not be single, singles' agenda-driven. We're going to take a comprehensive look at all of it. It might not seem like that sometimes, and if not, we're going to ask you to help us, help us explain better our thinking behind it. Because we just maybe need to communicate that. We will minimize the number of transitioned students experienced. That's a goal, right? We will keep that at the forefront as we work through this. And lastly, I want the board to hear this and the community to hear this. We will not change elementary magnet programming for '26, '27. None of our recommendations will come to the table that will include magnet school programming changing. That doesn't mean that you might not see a recommendation where the programming stays and it's in this building, but it moves to a different building, but it stays intact. Our recommendations, we've decided it's too much to take on in a single year, even if that is an idea. So it won't be a recommendation from us. And the results are not a whole lot different than what we've talked about already. So I won't read through all of those, but really it's efficiency, it's effectiveness, it's all that goes into it. It's a plan that'll be desirable, feasible, sustainable, past '26, '27 regardless of what happens next. Questions before I move on?
So it's maybe better suited to a different part of the conversation as to the finances. But it's part of the mix, perhaps at the end of SOD or someplace on the way, factoring the fund balance.
That will, yes.
The management of the fund balance, a fund balance concept, target. And ultimately, SOD will also lead to a pathway to try to achieve a certain amount of fund balance.
I think that.
That's kind of a question.
Yeah. And I think it goes back to the question I heard at the last board meeting where Director Bassett, you were asking about where does the crisscross happen? And I think that's where the crisscross between finance advisory committee and this work starts to make sense at some point, the point at which I don't know. It just, it will start to take shape because they both are interconnected. All right. Want to help me pass this up? I mean, let's make sure board members for sure get one. Pretend that Stallow has one. I may have to have a couple of people here. You share. Okay. So what we, all that I just talked to, what we thought would be most helpful utilizing the I-Rod format is, how can we give you now the next layer of information? And the next layer of information is really the information that we're currently working off of to try and get to you. off of to try and get to you the first round of what our potential options are for next week. Because truth be told, we're not coming up with them between now and Monday. We've been working on it for a couple of weeks as we've been watching everything going on. So what I want for you to do is, I shouldn't have given myself one. What I want to do is we will walk through each one of these documents so we can ask some questions along the way, but we really want this to start becoming your binder of information as we go through this process so you can mark it up, ask questions, do what you need to. In addition, it's also a piece for you to say, hey, it'd be really nice for us if you have this document to put that, give that to us next time. So the first document you'll turn to is the district map. It's a map that includes all of our buildings, including our non-instructional buildings, so you can kind of get a visual representation as we're talking through, all that we're talking through. The second is the guiding change document that I just went through. And then on the third document, we start getting into the nuts and bolts. So the third document is something we're calling our condition sheet, long-term facility maintenance sheet. You heard the Vision 2030 team rep, talk about, they went through a, they got explained conditions study, they went through an activity on conditions and what it would call and all that kind of thing. The sheet that you have in front of you really represents that. And what I will do is turn it over to Maureen and Kristen to kind of talk through some of the details on it.
I'm happy to. Okay. Thank you. When looking at the total cost and identified by the, by the school building, you can see what we're looking at and, you know, through the materials that have been presented to you in different ways, the long-term facility maintenance plan that you saw this summer, you know we have, we have building repair needs. We have not necessarily kept up with what those needs are. Some, some needs followed by the long-term facility maintenance, others maybe necessarily don't if we need to do any sort of remodeling of a space. Anyway, when looking at the columns, you will see the urgent needs, which is year one and two. Those should be the needs that we're addressing immediately. We put some of those on pause to afford, to award the opportunity to make some school decisions because we don't want to invest a significant dollar amount into a building that we might not be using in the near term. And the next column is the high needs, the three to five years of, okay, we can maybe go a few years, but eventually we're going to need address, to address it, and then the intermediate needs. So essentially, from today, for the next 10 years, you can see the estimated total needs in each particular building. Now again, I'd like to reiterate, this doesn't mean any sort of a reconfiguration of a classroom space. If you're, you don't get flex learning, you don't get different things. This is, this is where our facilities are today and what needs to be addressed. You can also see the dollar amounts of, of any given building. And honestly, I love to go by the color coding with the green, meaning, you know, at least a quick representation, maybe it isn't scary or a high need versus as you work your way through the degrees of red. And that kind of highlights what we are looking at as far as it's a significant dollar amount and how quickly we need that significant dollar amount to get us up to speed. I will say at least as far as the vision committee talked about, and then you do have the square footage per building. This was also presented to the vision committee, and there was conversation, you know, interesting as far as it relates to the condition assessment. They talked about capacity with those buildings. And then it was also construction costs, like, do you make an investment that, you know, maybe is greater than your total square footage, dollars per square foot now, but then you get a reprieve, right? Like, because you're, if you were to put up a new space or a new building, theoretically speaking, you're going to go a decade or greater without having to make any repairs into a new space. And so how does that, maybe what you're looking at in today's dollar of dollars per square foot versus what you get in taking that offline over the course of 10 years with any sort of new construction? So that is what this material represents, and the expert, the true facility expert in the room, Maureen Mullin, is here if you have specific questions. Otherwise, that is the intent of this document, what we're using to help us say, what are we looking at as far as buildings versus putting money into versus, that's a large investment, and are we better off just starting over?
Dr. Paul? I hate to ask, but is there a comprehensive list behind this that shows the work? I'm sure there is.
Absolutely.
And will we have access to that?
Every school has a list divided by mechanical, electrical, applying, interior finishes, envelope, site.
Was that the document that we got a while? Was that the next report?
Yes.
And it's broken up by the schools?
Per school.
Okay. Thank you. And then, excuse me, is it broken up by urgent need, high need, and intermediate?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's, it's laid out horizontally rather vertically, but yes, for two years, three to five.
I have that document. So, thanks.
Yes. My question's just, and this can be ballpark, but new construction, square footage, is that like 450? Thank you. Just, just to have a.
450 per square foot?
That's really helpful.
Regardless of whether it's high school or elementary?
High, well, I would say that would be the average, the high school, depending on what you're building, what you're, you know, depending on the amenities, excuse me, the amenities of the high school, it might, you might be closer to five. An elementary school that maybe doesn't have the amenities, you're not putting in a large auditorium, you're not, you know, like, when I talk amenities, you're closer to five if you have a large auditorium going in, or you have something like that going in.
But the range of costs, elementary, X center versus four to five.
Let's say four to five.
Okay.
$400 to $500 a square foot.
For, for either?
For, again, yes. Elementary is going to be less just because they don't have the amenities, but yes.
Dr. Vaughn?
Does that take into account the increase in price because of the tariffs?
That would be to, to best estimate of today's cost. That's what they're going with. That is cost going today.
Okay, because those costs are going up. Absolutely.
But wood is really cheap right now. I heard that on NPR. The market's crashing on wood. I'm like, ah. Chocolate's way down.
But would that repair costs go up too?
Yep. And so I see that New Hope Learning Center has right now zero urgent needs, so that means it's kind of good as it is right now. Oh, yeah, well, I mean, that looks really obvious, but I'm, I'm not going to.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Today. But then in three to five years, it's like, whoa.
So that's, so you're getting, that's how we look at it. As we're coming up with options, we're looking at the kind of the cross-section that Kristen talked a little bit about, the protocols I talked about a little bit, that in our best guess, does it make more sense to keep and repair long-term or plan for keeping and replacing or consolidating too with the idea that potentially you replace and dream about what could be in its place without a referendum? So that's how the numbers come into play for us. And then all, what else happens is as we look at the costs and we're talking with Maureen and her team, it's really down to what is it that needs to be fixed, right? We had a conversation just this past, fix the entire HVAC system in a building, that's a lot different than parking lot or things like that that have to happen with buildings. It's something that impacts weathering in terms of roof or window or something, that's a whole different ballgame than we need to replace the floor of the gym. So we're taking that type of stuff into account as we're making recommendations. Not that it's perfect, but from our perspective, that's, if we bring something to you, that's the stuff that we.
Well, I will continue to muddy the water through this whole process because that clearly is my job. And this, on this team, is to make it challenging. When you're looking at our footprint as it lives today, our, and depending on what the survey says and what the board decides, our pool of dollars won't necessarily change. But as our footprint shrinks, the availability per site goes up, right? Because if you have a bank balance and you say, okay, at, at least as far as when you're looking at facility maintenance or even LTFM or whatever that looks like, if you're concentrated, again, it can be the exact same dollar amount, you can get a lot farther on two sites with $10 million than you could on 10 sites for $10 million.
Could I make one clarification to your question? It's saying that zero needs does not mean that we're not making zero investment. So for example, New Hope Learning Center, we put tens of thousands of dollars into that building since this summer in things that have failed, things that we have needed to repair, that sort of thing. So there are needs, even though that number is at zero, for more of a project number than the ongoing maintenance number.
So then, so, somebody else have a question? Sorry. So, let's just stay with New Hope Learning Center for a sec. Because it is initially was an elementary building. If we're, if we were to change to accept, for example, if it became a CTE campus, career technical, typically those kids are in high school or maybe late junior high, maybe still, maybe do some buildup, but anyway. So the, the cost of retrofitting an elementary building to accommodate high school kids is a cost. I noticed when we got the information back, it seems as though our CTE offerings are scattered between Armstrong and Cooper. So if they were consolidated, there could be some economies of scale, long-term, right across the street from a high school, unless it gets demolished, some people are talking about, not me, but, so, I mean, I, so that's the kind of information about the cost effectiveness of consolidating that program because it's got a great parking lot, you know, it's right across from the high school, you know, and so, and we can't do anything with that warehouse, the kind of program that we wanted to do for our high school kids at CTE cannot do in that warehouse, no matter what happens. That's a whole different equation. So, so really what that might look like in terms of a cost and in terms of long-term investment would be a soft question. We're not there yet, so it's not a hard question. But if we're thinking about economies of scale, we're talking about utilizing what we have already, and we're talking about because those programs, we're not going to get rid of our Omni Elementary, so we'll have capacity around the district for whatever, wherever there's children are, whoever's at New Hope Learning Center right now receiving services, there could be some services in our other elementaries because we have quite few right around here. I'm just looking your way.
No, I mean, you know. I'm, I'm listening and hearing what you're saying.
I know.
And I would, my, my initial response would be, hold that thought because can't you, so like LTFM dollars, the construction dollars are like-for-like items. So as a dreaming idea, I think that is something to throw on the table for 26, 27. It would be difficult because we wouldn't have the finances to retrofit.
So that would be tied to whatever bonding thing we might do.
Something like that would have.
But it could fit into the phase one plan if that seems to be part of the collective vision. I, I have no idea what, you know, I mean, that's just something.
It could be, that's right. And that is where, so it absolutely could, that's where I throw up these filters and the idea that if whatever decision we, this is a perfect example of if, if it's a decision like that that we would make, will it hold sustainable regardless if we have a referendum or not? We would just have to answer that question. Right? So, great, it actually, that actually works perfect to highlight that.
Well.
That's why we come back to it.
Thank you.
Ready to move on?
I think so.
Okay. The next page is the capacity chart. You, this will hopefully be a little bit recognizable, because this is the exact same capacity chart that we saw with the Reimagined 2030 recommendation document. We're using this on purpose right now because it allows us to set a similar base. And what I would say to this is, and I think we've mentioned this a couple of times, you can look at capacity and utilization a ton different ways. Depends upon what you want to put in as a criteria. I use the example of this room, actually. This room shows that it has a maximum of 226. However, that would mean it would be really packed and there could be no tables. If we designed this room that because we wanted groups of 10 to work at group tables, that capacity of the functional capacity of this room shrinks immensely, but nothing changed with the room. Same thing happens in our buildings. If we have a classroom, that's a regular-sized classroom, and we fit a regular class of third-grade kids in there, works great. If we move that classroom into a center-based classroom, that capacity drops to 10. Same-sized classroom, capacity is now 10 because of the program that happens in there. Happens every, all the other stuff, the easiest things that, that you can imagine, band. A bandroom has a much different capacity setup than a math room needs. Anything like that, any of your wood shops, any of your automotives, any of your CTE classes, you gotta have big pieces of equipment, might only be able to fit a certain amount of kids in the classroom. So as you look at this, this is just a grounding document, and it's based on how we have things programmed now. So when you look at this document, so we'll take our front high school, and it shows you the 24, 25 enrollment, because that's what, the best information we had at the time of this document. You're going to get the actual enrollments later on in this package. But the current program capacity sits just underneath that. So based on how we're programmed at that school, that would be the capacity. Someone might go, wait a minute, that didn't look like it should be that tight. There is a significant number of special education classrooms in that building that take up a lot of, back to the capacity. If we didn't need them for special ed, we could fit 25 more kids in each one of those classrooms rooms, the way we're programmed you can. So we can have a same building and have a huge capacity, take the same building and have a really small capacity based on how we design the programming. Any questions on this document as you have it for reference?
Well, just thank you for explaining the capacity, capacity of programming. It makes a lot more sense.
And we do have in there, New Hope Learning Centers in there on page two, just to point that out as well. Okay, we'll move into the.
Sorry, sorry. What about the transition?
CTC.
No.
You want to speak to RTC as far as capacity?
I'm getting the information right now. You want the capacity for RTC?
We.
And, and for the entire site? So that's RTC and a dot I can even go up, so our capacity for the entire site.
Right, yeah. And that's, is that like the crystal, what is it?
Crystal, yes.
Crystal, you said, or no?
For purposes of this, we did not do capacities for our leased spaces, but we can actually get that.
I just have a quick question because I know, for example, at New Hope Learning Center, there's also offices and things like that. So when you talk about capacity, is that just programming capacity? So you're not talking about the spaces that are used for offices?
Correct. This would be for programming for the instructional parts that are going on.
Okay. I was just curious.
That's a great question.
That would have to be, like, staff, I mean, there might be fewer staff, but staff will have to house somewhere, just like, if this building, it needs quite a bit of repair, you know, your warehouse here will have to office somewhere.
And it goes, it can work both ways, right? You could have a building right now that has three classrooms that for some reason were turned into four office spaces, and if you took down the walls, it could be a classroom again, and vice versa. You could have a school that doesn't have any office space in it, and you take classrooms and turn them into office spaces.
Director Long?
I have one more question that I just came up with. So Hyview, can we get the capacity, just can we separate it out from Sandberg? And just get that capacity of what Hyview is and what their footprint is and what they, you know, that might need to be?
Because right now, the Sandberg is including all of that, right?
It does.
Okay.
I can tell you on any given day right now, we need capacity for about 200 students physically on site. But we can get the capacity of what that pot is as well.
Yeah, and then, so one more thing too, is the virtual academy, are they still doing at times onsite where students have to come onsite?
Wednesday.
Okay, so then can we know about what that capacity might be or the space utilization for that?
Absolutely. All right, then we'll move on if there aren't any other questions. The next sheet, it's a little bit smaller, but this is how we view our enrollment. These are the October 1 counts of enrollment for each one of our grade levels at each one of our buildings. We thought that it would be important for you to have that as you're going back and forth between capacity, that you could have this at your fingertips.
Sorry, can I go back a little bit? I just thought of something else. So part of the ALCs is you need to have a middle school component to that. So is that anywhere in any of our plans?
It's on our notes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are these only seniors? Or RTC?
It's the 18 to 21 transition. 22.
Yeah, it's 22.
22.
If no questions, we'll move on to the next one. There's been some questions about open enrollment. So the next page is the top 15 open enrollment out districts. So you'll see it's broken down by elementary, secondary, total K-12, pre-MARS, and preschool. And then you'll see down the left-hand side, the top 15 districts that our kids open enroll out to.
Because as you're looking at that, Chris, can you just give us a reminder of statute in terms of funding?
Oh.
You did that at FAC the other night, and I thought it was just a good reminder.
Absolutely. So the conversation that we talked about at FAC was specific to resident students or open-enrolled students. And back to laws changing or formulas changing. And I want to say, you know, the problem is, is as time goes on, you forget what year it happened. But certainly within the last, I'll say last decade. Yeah, give or take. The way, the funding formula used to work, and it seems to be still thought about in the world when you're not working in school finance, is that referendum dollars used to be based on resident students. So whether those students actually attended your school or not, that's who you received those dollars on. And if an open enrollment student were to come in, you didn't get those referendum dollars for them. You got the basic funding formula, but you didn't get the referendum dollars that our community has approved. That has changed. So now if a resident student chooses a different district than us, that is, let's just say that student goes to Oseo. Oseo gets the credit for that student as it relates to their referendum dollars. Their community pays for it, but the kid is equal to that money. So same holds true for us. If we have a Minneapolis student that is choosing us, they, we get the same amount of funding on an open enrollment student as we do on a student that resides here that is choosing to attend here with us. So it went, the formula switched from who lives in your community, regardless of where they attend school, to who is attending your school. And I don't know that that is, has made its way, because it used to be for a very, very long time, the funding formula was as such where it was who lives in your community, not who you educate in your community. And now it's who you educate in your community is who we collect dollars on. So as far as funding goes, there is no difference to us between an open enrollment student and a resident student.
So, Kristen, are you saying that the referendum dollars that are generated in Minneapolis, if a child comes here, the referendum revenue also comes here? Or does the refer?
Our referendum revenue covers that child.
Okay, so, because I think they had a higher amount, they were Minneapolis students. So, okay, so our own referendum will cover them.
Yes. So, so is it true that, like, if it's 10 students, let's just say 10 students are resident students and 10 students are open enrollment students, our community then divvies up and if it's $2,400 per student, our community pays the $2,400 per student for those 20 students. If five resident students went to Minneapolis, they generate whatever Minneapolis's formula is on those five students.
So it ends up being apples and apples?
It does.
Okay, what you said you.
So then, open enrolling brings, does not cost us. It just brings money as if they were our own students.
Well, it doesn't, the, I'm going to be careful of your terminology.
Okay.
The student generates the same amount of revenue. That revenue is what gets generated within our district. When you say cost, the taxpayers pay for the students that attend our district. So the more students that attend, I mean, I need to say, it gets spread out in a very different way, but.
Because there's state aid also for those.
Yes, but I'm talking just the pure referendum component of it all. That's how it works. So, so yes, a student coming in, that's what, all students are created equal as far as the district funding is, goes.
So another way that I think about it is that, because we talked about this when we were contemplating C. If we, it was different then.
Yeah.
But if you, if you don't have the, you don't want to just take kids, if we just take kids from other buildings in our district, then, and fill it up, then we're going to have empty spaces behind that. In order to generate more revenue, we needed to be able to allow some open enrollment in to C to help make sure we can afford to have a C. I mean, it's the same thing, really, yeah. And so that sounds like this, this new iteration may have changed that somewhat if it's apples and apples now. But you're right, I don't think the general public knows that at all or has an idea about what that means. And so I think there are a lot of narratives out there that really aren't valid.
But not anymore. And I would like to say, because I saw the look on your face, like, oh my gosh. I'd like to be clear that there is, there is a significant amount of aid, whether it be at the state at level or the federal level, that supports those students. So it is to our advantage to have open enrollment students coming in because, or what, and we go through this with property taxes. For the 20-some percent that our local levy is, 80-some percent isn't. And that money is coming in with the kids. But I just want to be very clear that what a student generates as it relates to basic dollars, it doesn't matter if they're open enrollment, our referendum dollars, if they're open enrollment or not.
I don't even know the answer.
Director Long?
Just a quick question, because we have partial children listed. And so is that related to ADM or partial year or?
No, that's really, so unfortunately, we didn't have a great mechanism for pulling student count. So this is based off of average daily membership. And average daily membership would indicate that, you know, if we have a full 160, 70-day schedule and, you know, depending on that, if the student started day one and ended at the very last day, we get full credit. So some of these kids might have shown up in December.
Partial year, is it, and is it weighted?
This is not weighted.
Oh, so it's not weighted, it's just partial year?
Correct.
Okay.
And so you get an idea, again, it's not a perfect, what are, what are the students in a exact number of students going to, but you have a pretty good idea. We're going to be, you know, for Hopkins, K-6. Again, it's not broken out how we break out our grades with a K-5, a 6, 8. But you get an idea that we probably have somewhere in the range of 340-ish students that are choosing that for a K-6 experience.
I was just curious, how you got 341.7 children? I just didn't know. I'm pretty sure, I didn't know, like.
It's the average house, what is it, the average house will produce 2-point-whatever? It's, that's the same methodology. Thanks, Nick.
So going forward then, that explanation, the little legend out there to tell us kind of what we're looking at, if we get some data that you're not, you tell us. Just a little legend would be helpful to kind of know what we're talking. That would be good. The other thing I wondered about is that this chart, and I think I might have asked this question, but this chart, geographically, when we look at our map and when we think about the outflow of our students, I don't know that we could geoc, and this could get sophisticated to geocode, you know, to kind of put on the dot and map and, you know, plot them. I'm wondering, you know, I'm wondering if, if we don't have the capacity, who might have the capacity to do that for us? And I'm asking that question because I think that that will factor into closures and other, it should, in my opinion. Closures and other kinds of things to kind of know what communities or what places are people migrating from us to somewhere else, wherever it is, just kind of knowing what that is.
So agreed. Right now, we're in a position to identify even the, our current year, our 25, 26 students that are choosing us. Even, you know, like, we, as we go through what we call as heat maps to say where are the kids coming from as they attend our building. Unfortunately, it's been a bit more challenging for us to find here are the kids that reside here that are going elsewhere. That's not, it's not as easy for us to extract right now as the kids coming in.
I wonder if MBE has it. If they don't have it, they probably have the capacity because geocoding is, I mean, that technology is old now.
It is, it is. But it's, it's getting into the finite detail of exactly what address are they living at? And then, like, that person is living there, and what are they choosing for an option? Is it a charter, is it a private, is it a, you know?
I guess I just wonder if it's possible to have that kind of a visual or some kind of proximity to it so that we have an idea about where, what laborers in this district are we losing?
We recognize that that is, we recognize.
It's shaded and colored or something.
Yeah. We're doing our best to try to find the best method to get that information because we agree that it is valuable. And we're just, it's presenting challenges for us right now.
And then one last thing I was going to say is that, looking at this chart and just that, that great explanation that really you just gave about how open enrollment has changed, I think there's a very powerful and important message that we should start messaging immediately in different ways, at different times. Because I think we need, if we're going to ever ask for any money, we need people to understand what's it going for. And I don't blame them because I'm really hard on my tax statement from the county. I didn't like it.
Director Long?
So I'm wondering about the students who are open enrolling into our district and what buildings those are, where we might have a high concentration of students who are open enrolling into a building.
And hopefully you can get, yes, and you can at least get a visual representation as we look at the heat maps.
We'll see some, yeah, once we.
Oh, it's funny.
Yeah. Oh, I never saw a heat map.
No, you will know.
See the heat map? My life is quiet.
I know. We have to keep you engaged.
So before we get to the heat maps, just a couple more things. One, the next sheet is demographics. We are administratively is up back to trying to make sure we know what does each of our elementary school buildings look like in terms of demographics? What's the breakdown? Where are our kids? We have a lot of kids that move internally in district to other buildings. And so this chart will help you to see what we're looking at. When we're looking at unintended consequences, if we take this building and we close it, if we split this up, what might that do? Do we have options to impact buildings that are already racially isolated? And can we work to make them less racially isolated? So all of that type of stuff comes into play. The other thing that we do look at, depending upon the different opinions out there, is when you look at our magnet schools, our specialized schools, are there differences with demographics? Right? And you're going to see that, it is what it is. The numbers are what they are. And so I think we have to take that into consideration as a decision-making factor. Has nothing to do with programming, it just is what it is. And so we use all of that as we are, again, coming to you next week with the start of some options. This is just one more piece that's living behind the scenes that we are looking at. I'll point out at the bottom of this, you'll also note that we've included in here free and reduced special education and English learners for each of the buildings, both by number and percentage. So you can get an idea of that across the board. And then, so you don't keep flipping back and forth, you will see open enrollment in to each one of the elementary buildings, both by number and by percentage. And then we've included those open enrollment out by area level. So you have all of that. There's a start direct line to your question of where are our kids from elementary coming in, passing from town.
And I think that as we, you know, I think a point of conversation with the board, as we start considering different options, what is your desire as we look at this data?
All right, the next.
Go ahead.
All right, the next page is a holdout page. And that is the operational cost by building and averages. I'll let, I'll turn that over. See if we'll hold high so they explain the costing sheet.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. So when looking at this, there's a few caveats. And the numbers are different than what was presented to the Vision Committee. So I'll just walk you through, this is based off of 24, 25 data. And why I say there's a caveat is we're all aware of what happened with staffing in 24, 25. Now, I will say that to Director's Long's point earlier, as far as direct impact, direct contact to students, when you look at the numbers, what would be in the second column, so you see the description and then you see the 050, which, these are UFRS codes. And it's indicating what area exists. In classroom instruction, that is, like, teachers within a classroom are completely remote. Because the philosophy is, the theory is, wherever the kids go, the teachers go. Like, that is not going to be costed out as far as a potential reduction because in theory, they should be following the students. But what does change is maybe your, I'll call it the first ring of indirect student or staff support administration changes. You were to close a building, you're not going to have a principal enter into another building where there's already a principal. That's the O5O, or support staff for administration. When you look at the 292, there's no dollar amounts in the elementary school, because 292 is our athletics. So what does that mean as you get further along into the middle schools and the high school? And maybe the duplication, maybe not. And then the different codes, general instruction, library, media, and, and again, this is, these are, this is stuff that existed last year. So we know that health services model has changed. These numbers are not reflective of that change. And so as you work your way through, you will see the bottom line as it relates last year. And you, within these categories, and then you will see an average, which I'll just say is a million dollars. Now, the vision committee was when we talked about elementaries and what you would say in reducing, taking an elementary school offline, we used $500,000. Reason being is, until some decisions are made as far as, you know, maybe what does library and media look like? What are the different things? We don't want to, we need a number to project, right? We need a number as the board works through the SOD process. And if that, if we just say generically, we believe an elementary school is a million dollars, is that probably a reasonable assumption? Maybe have transportation or different things in there? It's probably reasonable. Is it going to be exact, no. If someone said, hey, you decided to close Forest, why aren't we seeing 1.16 million dollars of reduction? There's some flow in here, and again, it's not entirely altruistic numbers that were happening last year.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, why can't we use this year's numbers?
We don't have final projections.
We, we, no, more or less, I mean, these are estimates in, anyway. I'm, I'm just curious why we don't, especially since we know health services was a different model and.
Then I would argue.
And we are, we were overstaffed because we were gonna cut staff and didn't cut staff. These seem like really difficult numbers to work with if they're really truly that off.
Well, I'm not saying they're really truly that off, I'm saying they're off. You know what I mean? So if you were to look and say, okay, yes, we have a health services model that has changed, and our social worker has changed, but also there's been salary increases, just by the sheer nature of everything, that also aren't reflected. And there's utility costs that aren't reflected. And that's why I, I just want to say, I genuinely, again, if we looked and said, doesn't, if, holistically speaking, if we said, we believe an elementary school is a million dollar savings, regardless of the elementary school, I think that's fair. Because it's, again, it might be slightly higher, it might be slightly lower, it's the best estimate we have. And this year's estimates are not going to necessarily produce a significantly, significantly different result. What I don't want to get hung up on is someone looking at saying, this elementary school is this. We, we can't say that, like, that's not entirely, not, not true for basing estimates. Director Bass.
So to that point in that question, for our sake, the general public, I get what you're saying. They're not gonna have you in a work session so we can talk through these questions.
Correct.
But even for us, when I go away, I'm gonna forget what code, for example, A10, something like that. You know, because, I mean, again, I'm just arguing for legends and little descriptors and these things, so that we kind of can go back later and see. But having said that, I do think that to, to, to the extent that we can have real numbers about, you know, this year. Because for me, what that does, it helps, helps me understand the current situation that we're in, the current services we're delivering, and the delta between what we had and where we are, because that paints a different big picture. And having that picture helps me, because when we start talking about what else we might either take away, or what we might wanna bring back, it brings, it gives me additional context that I don't have. Unless I'm sitting talking with you, and you can explain it to me. So having those, that comparison is useful to me to have. This is a meaning that, we can say those things, right?
It is absolutely, as you should.
I know, I mean, I, I, I'm just saying, I just, I'm making sure we're correct.
Yes, and your legend, other than athletics.
I know, but I'm, I'm, that's just.
No, no, I mean, I, I certainly can, again, for the sake of, I can give it, yes, I can pull out budgeted numbers and, and see how, how they match to what we currently have.
Well, we had a charge just like this one, that just looked at what it is.
Well, there, yeah, but what is, is, we're not even halfway through the year yet.
Well, I think projections.
Projections, yes.
And we, and we know it's projections, they're projections, it's gonna change.
Yes.
You know, but I think that that has value.
I don't disagree. Again, for the sake of conversation tonight, when we're looking, because I know, I know the conversation has been, what are the numbers, what are the numbers, what are the numbers? Here's the best run at the numbers based on 24, 25 information.
If we're, we're on a fast run and a fast track, you're expecting a lot out of us. You collectively administration, I'm not looking over that.
You can look at.
You're expecting a lot out of us, and I'm just saying, you know, this is what we need.
Start chewing on this, you'll get an updated document. But then as we look at, you know, again, moving very broad swipes, and again, it, it, we were conservative with the vision committee, but if you were to look and just purely take averages, a million dollars is an elementary school. Just shy of 2 million is a middle school, and 3 million is a high school. And then as we move down, the philosophy under food service, yes, it's not the general fund, but the philosophy is, you still need to serve the kids, right? So that's why, okay, there is efficiency. If we were to have less sites, economies of scale, which means the belief is we can save a third of the labor. That's why it's presented that way, we can't save all of the labor, we can save some of the labor. And then the, the numbers listed below are truly just what happened. They're not even intended for, you know, for sake of conversation of reduction. It's just where was, where was alternative facilities or LTFM dollars coded? And where was some tech levy coded? That's more just FYI. I will be happy to produce another document with our projections for this year to see how it compares. But wanted to get something in the board's hands, when we're having conversations about reducing our footprint, at least for 26, 27, we have some idea of the impact.
So have we closed any one of these? But didn't sell it and still owned it? Would the optional maintenance cost be above that, or would it be considerably less than that?
Considerably, well, what's presented would be, that's the total. If we just barely kept the heat on and whatever, it's gonna be, you know, I'll look at Forest again. If you're looking at four and a quarter, you know, are you now looking at 375, 350, you know? It, it, it won't be all, all of it, because you'll, you would still have to run something to prevent pipes bursting until you offline the building completely, but it would be significant.
Director Mullin.
I'm wondering about, so High Views is blank. Also wondering about the transition center.
Yep.
Cost there and online? What are those costs, because we're still gonna have to factor those costs in.
So those costs were not listed, because in looking at it, I wasn't, I wasn't as confident with the accuracy of those numbers at that time. I will see what I, as far as projections, that's a different spreadsheet. But at, at the time that, again, that this document was created, and it was created for it, to make sure we knew where we were with the vision committee work. We hadn't even come close to closing out, or we had closed out 24, 25, but not anywhere near the cleanup, which I then wasn't confident that the correct allocations were going there.
So we can get.
I will work on well the projections of what you get, yes.
And then I'm also wondering too, so one of the things that we've been told about why we're so top-heavy with administration, because of all the buildings that we have open. So now, if we're closing buildings, what's gonna happen with all that, that administration? Are we still gonna need all that administration? Is there a staffing plan for that?
So that will all depend on what the actual decisions are. That's the biggest, that, that is a great question applied to all of us, is you take two buildings and you consolidate them into one, you would think that everything folds in. You can easily make the argument that if I have two elementary schools, and I piece them together into two eleme, or into one elementary school, as long as I have the relative size of what we would consider that elementary school to be, similar to other elementary schools, we could reduce administration on it. Still be able, we'd be able to operate that school at its full capacity with one principal, assistant principal. Whereas before, maybe you had two. So you would see a reduction in administration if you collapse buildings together.
And then what about at the high school level? Because Director Hillenbrand was saying something about, you know, usually larger high schools are more top-heavy. So what might that look like? Are we gonna be still spending a huge chunk of funds on high school administration? Whereas maybe we weren't on elementary?
So it would depend upon how you set up the programming of the high school. So there are districts that have their administration set up by grade levels, there are districts that have their, their administration set up by field academies, there, they have different models where it's, it might be one principal and a couple assistant principals, and then a dean model. Really, once you get down that path, that's part of that decision-making process, based on how you're gonna program that high school. You may not have to have all licensed administrators, you may have to have leaked, I mean, even leaked teachers in certain things. It really just depends upon what that looks like in terms of how you program it.
And so will that be a discussion that we're having as part of cost two?
It wouldn't be, but it wouldn't be, it would, most, it's not gonna be for high schools as part of this discussion, because we, we wouldn't be able to, for 26, 27, we wouldn't be able to move it into one high school. You could foresee a scenario where you might be in that discussion around, for sure, elementary schools, potentially a middle programming. But, I mean, it's gonna be the elementary thing. You take, you take some of your smaller schools that are, our small school is operating at 271 kids. We have other elementary schools that, our largest elementary school has 700 kids. They both have two administrators, or one administrator and two administrators. So you bring together two smaller schools, there should be able to reduce your administration, should be able to reduce your clerical cost, should be able to reduce the amount of specialists you need, because now you can keep specialists in one building, rather than having them work between two buildings. There's a lot of efficiencies that can gain by, by moving buildings together. You may gain some efficiencies in transportation, you'll gain some not operating two kitchens, you'll gain some in not having custodians. As long as you don't increase the footprint, you, you gain some of that physical plant efficiency as well. But I think it's a great question, because to, to your question and to what Kristen was explaining here, you can't just go off the number, you can only start with it. And then you have to start, you have to say, okay, here's what we think we wanna do. And then it's, what's this truly gonna look like? Because you could have a scenario where you combine two buildings together, and you don't see much efficiency at all. So if efficiency is your key, right back to that filter, efficiency effective equity, if all you're gaining is efficiency, and you're not gaining effectiveness in programming, and you're not gaining anything or maintaining anything with equity, that might not be your best decision to be able to sustain over time. So it's, it's a great question to ask, because we have to push, we have to push that.
I think that's part of what, you know, we've gotta continue to do too, in terms of looking at our base and service model for staffing, is, is what do, you know, we made some decisions last year. We'll have to come back around those to make sure that those were the decisions. And as we shrink our, our footprint and do site consolidation, doesn't mean our needs of our students are getting any less. So again, we may not see some of the efficiencies that we would just automatically possibly assume. We may make different decisions if more social and emotional support is needed across our elementaries and things like that.
Because you don't have no golf staffing, I mean, you're, you're, you're not consolidating buildings just for the savings and physical plant. You, you are going to gain staffing efficiencies. You may not have to run this grade level at, at one and a half amounts of kids, but you still gotta run two sections where you add them together, and now you actually have full classroom. Even you're gonna gain some efficiencies in staffing as well that come into this. It's just less predictable, because it depends upon what your decision as you make, and what building you actually move kids into.
Director Mullin.
So if I could ask another question kind of around that, then talking about elementary, then how do we, to combining buildings, ensure that we have the small class sizes that parents want? And what does, what will those class sizes be, what does that mean? Is it a ratio, are we gonna have a fixed number?
So where it starts is what the board has already said, as class sizes, and this, the directive of any changes are not going to increase class sizes. So that means as we look at bringing buildings together, we have to make sure that we're not boundarying more kids than what it would result in the class size that the school could handle.
So are we gonna figure out those numbers of what would be a good, small class size before figuring out capacity of that school or about?
Right now, we already have the board ratios for staffing, so that's what we, that's what we're going off of now, what the, the ratios are. I agree, love. That's a board decision.
Director Mullin.
Anything clarifying the health facility and tech levy lines on this?
That is just the dollars that we spent at those particular sites last year.
So the, let's say Forest, almost $30,000, that was in addition to these operating costs up here?
Yeah, that we spent, LTFM.
Oh, okay.
And, and a lot, I, I shouldn't say a lot, there are district-wide costs to, I mean, I don't want people to look at this and say, well, this was, this is in totality. We do have district-wide costs that don't get coded specifically to a site. These got coded specifically to a site, again, back to even when Director Mullin had said, just because the new book learning center says zero, that doesn't mean we haven't done anything. We have, it's just not showing up as a high need under that, those categories.
And then the tech levy costs, obviously, is the money they've spent out of the tech.
Yes, yes.
That clarifies, thank you very much.
Have a seat in our hands, that's important, heat maps.
Okay, so heat maps.
See, that's just the name.
So, so we have software program that we're using that generates what we're calling heat maps. And so what we've done for you, again, is just to give you some, a visual representation of, right? And I will point this out to begin with, if you go and try to count the dots, you are not gonna match the dots to what's on the other enrollment sheets, because there could be several addresses linked to one dot there. What this is giving you is just that it's a heat map. Here's where your population of enrollment is really generally coming from for that building. So if you look at the first one, it's Fair Pilgrim. So Fair Pilgrim, and then you'll see that the students from Fair Pilgrim, the way we look at this map, we look at it and go, there are students coming from all over the place, really. Several coming from the east side, and very light in the Plymouth area in Pilgrim. But that's how we use this map. Go ahead.
Please identify the colors of the little dots, what is the black, what is the purple, what is the blue?
The, the.
All the school buildings.
All the school buildings.
Oh.
Yeah, so your, the school buildings that are, are black are your elementary schools. Your purple buildings are your high schools, and your blue buildings are your middle schools. And as we printed these, thank you for noting that I noticed that it didn't.
Didn't have the names.
It did keep the names on that.
There was way too much for it to really.
And I can't control. And I can't control that.
Just look for the red dots.
No, I'm just saying.
So in the bottom left of each page, you'll see the name of the building and where it's going to. And you'll have to look back at the very first page of your map because I can't, it's a software program. I can't add the names of that.
Okay.
I don't have that.
So the red dot is actually, this is a student who lives over here and then they're going to Fair, correct?
Correct. So, so if it says, it says Fair Pilgrim, the dots represent where one or more students are coming from.
Got it.
And it's, again, it's just to give you a quick idea of, is there a population concentration for a school building visually?
Generally speaking, each one of those dots also represents a bus route? Or not? It's just where the students are coming from?
It signifies their residential address.
Okay. But no correlation to?
Well, your magnets, yeah, yes. I mean...
They live outside the district, they're not getting bused to make it.
No. But, but when you look at that, when you look at Fair Pilgrim or you look at C or you look at RSI, yes, we're running buses to grab the in-district students. That will not be the case for the quote-unquote neighborhood schools or the non-magnet elementary schools.
There's not a great option to just hit print and have these print from the software. So you have to take screenshots. But I thought for you as the board, this would be good for you to have.
Well, if you flip to, like, Metal Lake, if you flip to, which I think is three or four pages down, or into the binder, it's very clear which building is Metal Lake.
That's the neighborhood school.
That's the neighborhood school.
I guess for me, more information I want is I still would like to know like exact numbers of students who are enrolling into our district. I think that that has an impact on what that enrollment would be and possibly if there are changes or that school closes or boundary changes, that's going to have an impact on us and...
So for the elementaries, which is what we're just really talking about that, we do have those numbers on this enrollment page. Very bottom, the enrollment in for each one of the elementary schools.
But not from there. She says she wants to know from where they're growing. Yeah, I mean, I guess from some schools, it might be Minneapolis. It's like when you look at Nobles. But then if I don't have like the exact number from Minneapolis or like, you know, when you look at Neal, Neal has some from Minneapolis, some from Brooklyn Center. Looks like there's some from, what is that? There's some from Pritley. There's some from Plymouth. Like, what are those exact numbers from those areas for Neal?
Look into that. Let's see what there is, see what we can come up with.
I mean, because a dot could possibly be an apartment building and there could be several families coming out of that apartment building to that school.
You don't have to dig into that because what, with the software program, what, all it shows me is just like the address. So, see what we can, see what we can find that's consistent that we can do it for every...
So, the question about transportation earlier. For example, why look at RMS? We are not, we are or are not providing, we are not providing transportation for any student who doesn't live in our district.
That is not necessarily the case.
We are. We lessened some of those routes last year, but not all of them.
So just, how much of that we're doing is, is that somewhere? How much transportation are we dividing to students who are not our students? I mean, you know, they don't live here. That's just, it wasn't real future. I mean, because I do think that maybe that goes part and parcel of what Kristen's Caroline's asking. Still finding some, maybe just by zip code, no, I don't know. My favorite thing on that is the heat maps.
So for this, what we'll leave you with, what, it's just simply the question, what information do you, at this point, would be helpful for us to bring more of, to bring differently? It may not come tonight. I mean, it might be something where you're thinking about it and you're looking through the, through your binder and email the chair and superintendent and say, okay, I'm looking at this. It'd be great if we could see this.
One thing we haven't talked about, I'm sorry. One thing we haven't talked about is what, there are also the other programs. So IB, AP, all those other initiatives and programs that the district has that I don't even know. But like, what are we going to, is there talk about what we want to double down on? What we want to, because, what we want to let go of? And how that plays into this? Because obviously IB, for example, you know, that starts elementary, then you have your middle-year program and then your high school program. So that is something that we have to decide when invest in or not invest in. Where we're going to do it, where we're not going to do it. And so understanding some of that and how that plays into this arts and innovation piece or not. And I don't have, it's not me advocating one way or the other, but knowing and understanding that and what the district is thinking in terms of how that connects to that idea and that curriculum is really important also in how some of this plays out, right? Because right now, elementary, that's Lakeview. And so, and those teachers, and they're invested in that program, right? Middle, that's RMS, right? So like, it's, knowing some of that too would help inform our decisions.
I think we could bring some of that. Because with any program like that, whatever it is, it's the cost benefit piece. And what is the, combined with the value statement?
Right. And that, and the other piece too that we didn't talk about is Spanish immersion. You know, part of the 2030 was, you know, question of how that works in middle school. Right now, it's sort of a school within a school kind of sort of trapped in the middle school. One of the suggestions was maybe making that K-8 program. And so I don't know, and I know what, few issues, like, Spanish immersion is great, but a few of the issues are, of course, that when kids leave, you can't replace them, right? That makes that very hard program. But also finding the teachers and the qualified teachers. And so I don't know if we want to lock ourselves in. But also, I know a lot of kids do continue into middle school and even high school. And so what, in terms of curriculum and teachers and the ability to find teachers and all that, I guess I'd like to hear from administration at some point, the feasibility of any of that and what that might look like and what you guys are thinking. Because I can say, yeah, let's do it, but if there's not staff.
Yep.
Yes.
On that, it would be interesting also to learn, like, at language immersion, do they offer all the programs that a regular elementary school offers? That they, that they have special ed help if they need it or that they have various different components to the program that you might not get in a magnet school, but you do get the mainstream elementary school. I'd like to, I'd like to know that information.
Question, red lines. Are these the boundaries for the neighborhood schools?
Oh, the boundaries for the school.
In one neighborhood school boundary area, there are actually three elementaries or two elementaries in another one.
Other magnets?
They're the cities.
I think this might be, it's not, because...
It's not necessarily perfectly divided when you see that. They, they crisscross like on the south side where C is and Sonnason and Neal are all inside of one bigger boundary. It doesn't subdivide that out. But if you go up to Zachary Lane, that's all divided up in there.
One thing I will follow up with, with the transportation is just a, if you don't get the numbers, but a reminder that with the transportation change last year is that we move, depending on the zip code a student resides, they have the opt, we will bus them to the nearest building that suits their grade level. So if they're a particular zip code, they're going to go to North Port. If they're, you know, they're, all would go to RMS or Cooper as far as our busing.
For external.
For external. If we don't, you know, they're not going to a different site. We don't bus them unless the zip code is assigned to that particular building. And I'll get you the numbers of how many were busing, but just a friendly reminder that that was the decision we made last year.
Kristen, I know that there was a question, I believe it was by a board member, about the impact of the transportation decision that we made. And if I recall correctly your data, which is always dangerous when I'm reciting your data. But I believe what you said is that we lost, in that change of transportation, there were four students who did not continue on in Robbinsdale area schools. And we gained 64 students from that area.
And what helps is we have the transitional grades, right? Like, so you do graduate your seniors and, but the net result is what was pulled out of Infinite Campus was that number that there wasn't.
So, you know, again, if I remember us sitting around this table and I know I was concerned, right? What's the impact of losing students going to be on this transportation decision, which we made to save money? And so these are things that we can't predict. We don't know. That's some data of what the result was.
Judge Bass? So a question I have is a concern around kind of programming. And I'm wondering, because we have our curriculum, curriculum slides programming, whatever it is, to what extent, if any, are they wrestling with some of the questions related to reimagining or anything? Or are they looking at just what is now? And then, and, you know, how kids are doing and all of that with the curriculum we have?
The district advisory council?
Right.
Yeah, I think their first meeting is coming up. So no, that wouldn't be a group that right now, no. They're, they're dealing with what is and looking at the data around the report.
So we can't look to them necessarily? Some of the questions around programming that Director Hillenbrand just asked? So that, that committee necessarily will not inform that decision?
Right now, they're not, they're not set up in that way.
Okay.
And I think it's a fair question, say, how are we going to get input on some of those things? Some of it, we did get some input last year. We did look at money and costing and some of that last year. So we might have to revisit that.
Just with your existing pool of talent, who's going to help you do that thinking? You're not going to put me into that committee. I'm not sure I understood that.
What I, I just stated that some of that data, how much does IB cost across the district, right? So all of these things will be in consideration as we make decisions for both schools and closing. Got some input last year on that. Then I think we'll just have to see the boards. Depending on what options come forward, what else do you want us to seek input on from the community?
So then an initial piece of information that I might want to have at some point is the school improvement plans of the various schools and how their school improvement plans have landed. Are they, I mean, are they successful? Are they, you know, how do they see themselves for life in the current race? But those school improvement plans at the various buildings inform or attentive, this is a broad statement, it's not necessarily true, you know, but in general, they should be informing how that school is doing, how they're assessing their academic progress and how they see their outcomes. So to the extent that their plans do some of that, that will be important information to know. Whether that filters into the administrator, the teachers and all of that, it's in your daily life that you will sort through when we start doing the sorting at some point. For example, if we're to close a couple of elementary schools and one elementary school has been hitting the mark on their school improvement plans, they have been significantly moving the needle with their students, that speaks to, in my opinion, you know, I'm not, I'm just a regular old parent here. You know, so it speaks to how I would think about that school being effective. And so I think some of that kind of data, this just independent data about how the schools are doing would be helpful to think about as well, you know, so...
Any other information anybody knows there would be?
And we go with the various programs, you'll include student numbers or the population?
Yep. I'll jump back quick just to this stuff here. So this will be, and we're all, we will all go back and forth between this. So the, and it's just what's coming up right now. Because these, as your mind starts to work through the data, then we will jump through what we, then what about this program, this program? And so this is why I put this slide up before is once we take a building, an option, we first go through the primary decision points and then we go, okay, wait a minute. This building looks really good from a money standpoint. It looks really good from a location standpoint and operational cost. Now, from a secondary decision point, so the question that was just raised, programming. Does it have a program that either A, we can't replicate in another building? Or we will totally mess up something? And then what's going to happen is a decision point for the board. The board will have to say, this is an option. It meets all the primary decision points, but it's got this program. Or what are you willing to do? Is this not an option? And then we take that off the table and we, we retool it. So it will naturally bring us down. I'm glad that you're asking these questions for future stuff because it's, this will naturally take us down that path for you as a board to say, yeah, it makes sense. It's the same thing with location. This, this building makes the most sense in the world and to the question of open enrollment, wait a minute, hmm, that might not be the best geographic decision to make based on what, you know, so we got to retool. So there, these are very valid questions and they're coming, like, this is how we move through this.
And the thing too though, it would be really helpful to know, you know, when you're talking about operationalizing things too, like if we're going to be doing, let's say we decide we're going to do arts and innovation, right? It sounds like that's the direction everybody's, you know, on board with for the most part. So then how does IB fit with that? How does...
So then, how does IB fit with that? How does AP fit with that? How would you do these other things that we're already doing, full service, I'm not saying that full service wouldn't fit with it, but like, how do all these things fit with that and enhance that and support that, right? Or, because if we're going to be doing something big like that, you got to really put your, all your eggs in that basket, and then you got to be able to let go of some little things too, and I think that's part of my concern, right? You can't hold on to everything and try to do this new thing really well. And I want to, if we're going to do this, I want to be able to do it fidelity, and that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
I'm glad you said that. You know, I think in some of the emails that the board has received, you know, from a couple of our magnet schools, there is that caution that they're saying, you know, to be able to have the success that we've seen in some of these flagship programs that we have, it's been training and years of working on it. So, it's not just going to happen overnight. It's not going to just be replicated. And, right, the intentionality of what that looks like in terms of planning for and training our staff and our kids, and all of that's going to take a huge amount of effort. So, you're right, if we're going to do it, and again, some of these are vision questions that aren't here yet, which is exactly the complexity that we're talking about, we don't want to make decisions here that ruin some of where this vision is, but we don't know exactly yet today where this vision is. So, that's some of the messiness. And your questions and the conversations that we're having and the emails that we're getting, like, all those things will help us as we bring clarity to that.
So, I'm wondering about, you know, if we have some of our programming in rental property, property we're leasing. So, if we close a building, is there any opportunity to repurpose a building we've closed to house something into a property that we own versus keeping, continuing to pay rent to somebody else?
The only consideration, the answer is yes, but the consideration is can we get out of those lease plans? Because if we were to have a property of which in some way or another we can't get out of that lease agreement, we're still paying. But, I mean, conceptually, yes. I mean, you could move anything to a district on building. It's just can we undo the rest of it?
So, can we find out about that, if we can get out of that? It looks like one's coming up.
Three years.
Two than the other, yeah.
Now, look at, so the one you guys watched tonight mostly was Crystal Learning Center. There's like five more years, and that lease expires 2030-1. There is no, I'm actually looking at the lease right now. There is no buyout clause, which isn't surprising typically a landlord with an lease house space. They don't allow you to pay for early, you can try to negotiate those things, but they typically will require you to pay the full, therefore rent because of, you know, that's what we agreed to pay them over that time span. So, there is no buyout, early buyout clause in the lease right now. Doesn't mean you can't try to negotiate with the landlord if that one expires in 2030-1.
And that one's pretty close, that if we're repurposing a building, it might line up.
Right.
Right, we might need to not renew a lease.
Yes.
So, we put it on ice until we get out of the...
It becomes part of the, not the 26, 27 plan, but January.
The other phases of the plan, it should be, it should be talked about.
But when we get rid of the building, we can just like hold it until we know we're on another lease.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, I had another question too. So, are we looking at like elementaries first, then middle schools, then a plan for high schools? Is that kind of the process we're doing here?
I think that right now, right now, we're holding, yeah, I don't, I can't imagine, careful what I say always, I can't imagine we're going to make a plan for 26, 27 of our high school. We are able to be able to make a decision and bring some options with both elementary and middle school considerations for 26, 27.
Judge Hillenbrand, do you have anything?
Oh, I was just going to say that one thing about, like, for the Crystal Learning Center, for example, is that there's, moving programs, there's a lot of nuance, especially with, when you talk about adult ed, because our elementary, like, art buildings, it's about access, right? You have to be on a bus line, you have to, there's a lot of nuance to it, so it's easy to say you can move a program, but when the program was at Sandberg Learning Center, that was a big disservice to the adult education program, so you have to be thoughtful about where you move it to. So, there's a lot of other parts to it. It's not just popping it into a building. It has to be accessible to adult learners.
I appreciate you saying that, and I just, I want, board members, I want you to know that most of the questions that you were asking about, we've been in conversation about. Doesn't mean we've made any decisions, but it's been this notion of considerations. And last Wednesday, that's exactly what we were talking about, is access.
Judge Bass?
Well, I guess one of the last things I'm thinking about is communications, because of communications, just even our understanding tonight about certain kinds of things and our communications experts, well, it's only those. And so, the communications plan, I just think it's just as important, because at the end of the road, if there is an ask, then I think the better job we can do of educating, just even as we go, because we're, we're in meetings with you all the time and you hear all the questions we have. So, I'm just saying.
No, appreciate it. At the end, the very last thing that I have on my agenda for tonight, not your agenda, but it has next steps.
Oh, that's my next question.
As we work, we have one more thing we have to do before that, but I just want you to know again, that communications, both on our website, what's that cadence of regular updates and review and making sure that it's easily accessible to our community?
And even, and even some of the, some of the documents, make sure that they're nerds, well, not nerds, because the nerds will know, but the non-nerds will understand what they're reading. You know, I mean, I really think that's important.
Yeah.
Because we've got so much misinformation in this community already about a whole range of things, and so.
I have a question. We've been talking long term. What are we going to expect next week?
So, our goal, and that's why the last question is, are there some specific things, is you're sitting here thinking tonight that you'd like us to consider as we bring forward some options Monday night? Our plan, and we've got a few meetings that we've got to land on this week to make sure we're confident bringing forward some options, but that's our goal, is next Wednesday to bring a couple of options forward for conversation, what if, yeah, but what about this? Because that's how we end up getting to the best possible scenario.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, what did I say?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Monday, I'll get you here, whatever you want to me.
Well, Wednesday's the finance advisory council, so we can all partake in that too.
Okay.
Also, next Monday, also next Monday, board members, at 5 o'clock, we get to be humiliated by super smart high school kids. That's our Quiz Bowl Day.
Which day?
5 o'clock, Monday, the 20th. I'm telling you now, I will send you an email.
We'll go up, bother you.
And maybe communications can not tell anybody.
So, but it pulls back and asks the question again, is there, is there anything right now, any ideas that you have right now that you want us to be thinking about, wondering about, planning for as we work on bringing forward some options for consideration?
Yeah, I would like to know, at the elementary level, if Bob can pull up one of these hit maps on the current elementary students that we have, if they were geographically located to a particular school based on their zip code, what that would look like? With that, their magnet programs be factored in.
So, the residents in the different areas? Okay, so.
I don't know.
Yes, I think transportation would have that. Are they used to?
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'll get it figured out.
Sorry.
Do not, don't ever be sorry.
Before the out vibration, when you say that.
Okay, Director Bass, it was Andy Anderson's kind of...
Well, that was a clarifying question?
Yes.
Director, it was him.
RSI, and, C, and Fair, all magnets?
So, let's assume they are not magnets.
All of them, all of them.
Correct.
You have the schools, and then you have where the kids live.
Correct.
Okay. The kids that choose to attend here.
The ones that we currently have in the room.
To be clear, nobody is closing magnets.
Correct.
Four, 26, 27, we're the record.
Judge Alon, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I was wondering, so of the questions that we asked here about more information that we needed, will we have that information before our next meeting?
I don't know that that will be possible. We will, we will get as much information as we can. I am making members of this team that have been working 80 hours a week take some time over MEA. So, I'm not confident that we can have every question answered, but we'll have as much information to you as possible. With that, I also would like to have another conversation about the options. I recognize and value getting information to y'all and posting information in Board Book Thursdays at 4 o'clock, which we've just determined. I have a lot of concern with having options that we are bringing to the board to discuss for the first time and having that be in the public on Thursday at 4 o'clock. So, I'm going to ask and request that we hold on that and that that isn't posted to Board Book until meeting time on Monday.
That makes sense to me.
We'll have it. It'll be there Friday night.
No. We'll get it? Nobody gets it.
Let's not get it. We'd rather talk it through with you.
Okay.
So.
As long as we know. Yeah, so then, are you saying that based on what you already know and based on these, this discussion tonight, you will think through presenting us with some additional options?
Okay. Yep. So, the question is?
Four, 26, 27.
Only.
Well, I know, I mean, but you're not going to forecast anything? Some will have implications, some will have...
They will, some will have them.
And so, you'll identify what those implications are? Okay.
About what is, about what is, I see Director Alon's hand above, if something else you want to say?
Judge Alon?
I'd just rather it just be posted and just be transparent with everything.
Yeah, and for me, it's not at all. I hear what you're saying. For me, I just want to be really clear with y'all and with our public. This isn't a question of transparency, because we will be sharing everything with the public. I just have been around the block, and I know what's already surfacing in our community, and I'd rather have people be able to tune in, hear the conversation, instead of seeing it and making other assumptions, yeah. And again, not everybody's going to agree with that, understand that. I'm just trying to make sure we stay in front of the board. That's what I'm most concerned about, is that we stay in front of the board, you're hearing information from us where you can ask questions and make sure that it makes sense to you and revise as necessary, but I understand that. Judge Alon?
Judge Hillenbrand?
I was going to say that I appreciate what you're saying, and I do, I fully believe in transparency. And if we are all seeing it at the same time as the community, I believe that is transparent. And I agree 100%, though sometimes information without context causes a lot of confusion and causes a lot of angst. I mean, even the report from the 2030 committee, which was suggestions and ideas, you know, I had a staff member of mine, who happened to live in Robbinsdale, came in and said, "I heard there's only going to be one high school," and I said, "But nobody's made any decisions yet." It was a suggestion from a report, we're discussing it. She said, "Well, that's not how the article read." Right, so like, it causes a lot of chaos when it doesn't need to be. So, if we can all learn about it at the same time and get context, I think that's helpful both to us and to the community.
Because the chaos provides a huge disservice.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's just my two cents. So, I agree. I'm behind that.
So, if we find out at the same time, if I can live with that, you can live with that, you can't, you, you can't.
What are we living with?
Okay, what we're talking about is finding out the options on Monday night at the same time the public finds out.
Okay. Well, can't we just get a, get the data sent to us?
Well, in the interest of being, as Director Hillenbrand was saying when you went to the room, transparent, it would be more transparent if we didn't have it when they didn't have it, so then everybody has it at the same time.
Well, I don't see that as transparency. I mean, I just think that is a matter of timing. If we get the information, we have it, because we need to ask reasonable questions, and it's for the board's, whatever, I mean, and it's posted, now, that's administrative decision about waiting to post it. That's what John here is saying, and I hear that there's a question about the transparency. I'm more interested in having the information so that I can throw questions down, think about it in advance. I've got a lot personally going on, and I don't know when, waiting to hear when I'm going to try. So, I would rather have the information so that if I am here, I can read it or not, whatever, but, you know.
And also, we're getting the options, and we'll have time to discuss options, because we're not going to make a decision on any of these options until our second meeting in December, so there is some time once the options get explained to us. I saw your hand up, Judge.
So, different than typical work sessions, this is, these are very specific work sessions. Point being to have this time to get information to talk about. This session was a little bit different, because you got the starter pack of information so that you have. Any options we put out there in front of anything, your first response is going to be, so what am I looking at here? That requires conversation. It actually requires more information on the front end as you're looking at it, so you can go, oh, all right, so wait a minute, am I, does that mean this? Does that mean this? Does that mean this? What about this? I know we think we can do that in isolation. We will make tons of assumptions in isolation, because this group hasn't created the options that will be presented. These initial set of options are there to get, get the ball rolling. So, that's why it would come up. You'll have no context. You will have, the community have no context, and then this conversation will not happen in the same manner that it otherwise would.
We have four board members who feel that we get it, and they get it, when you get it on Monday. So, that's it.
The other thing that I want to share, and I've got to figure out the communication of this as well, but we've had some principals that made the request and said, if our school is going to be one of those named when we present options, will you come to our staff and tell us? And originally, I thought, yeah, that'd be a really nice thing to do, and in context of this conversation, we can't. We might bring three options to you, and seven elementaries might be on it. Again, I don't want to go to staff on Wednesday before MEA and say, oh, you're on this. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to send a communication to staff and families on Wednesday, wishing them a fantastic break, also saying, right, reminding them, where are we in the process? And that options are, the board's going to grapple with them and whatever else we'll come up with. But I just want you to know that that was a request from principals, and we're not going to be able to honor that either.
Judge Bass, I see your hand.
Yeah, yeah, I hear what you said. I guess I, initially, when I came in and I heard the discussion, I was like that, but I really want to say, one thing that the Reimagine team did is broke the ice that we're going to be closing some things. We might close several elementary, we might close a couple of middles, we might close the magnet high school idea. It's out there. I just feel like that, yes, there's a lot that goes on with which school is going to be. I cried in those meetings, I've been through a couple, you know, but I just really think, I think I really do feel like I want to see what the options are. I want to perform my own questions. And so, I mean, you're taking us... And so, I mean, you're taking a straw poll and saying that you want to do it, I'm saying I'm against that. I think we should just send us the information, if you'd like us to be circumspect with it and not share it with anybody, you know, I can live with that. You want to post it at the day that you, that we have the meeting, whatever you think is the best time to post it, go for it. I just think that we're all adults, responsible adults. We're sworn to do what we need to do for this community. And I think that having the information in advance is better for board directors to ask their questions, to formulate their questions, so that the time is well spent. It's a lot of information, and I really do like the opportunity to send you questions in advance. I really like that. So to the extent that we can send questions in advance to make our time together more fruitful, I'm all for that. You know, and so I just, you know, for whatever it's worth, you know.
Want to say again, folks?
I've just a couple other next steps. So the communication piece that Director Bassett talked about, this is going to be, you know, just an incredible challenge. So continue to help us in terms of what you're hearing and what would be helpful. We want to provide accurate, timely, responsive information that helps people understand the process, even when we can't provide them the answers that they want tomorrow. And we understand that they want those answers tomorrow, we understand that this is lives, right? The other thing that I want to talk about just a little bit, just a reminder about that community engagement and that we'll be getting the survey, some data back on November 3rd. That's going to help with some of the vision questions, may not help a lot, may not help you with some of these shorter term decisions for 26, 27, but it's going to give you additional input and community feedback on those broader options. The last thing that I want to just put out there for y'all is, we right now have scheduled for December 8th, that's the hearing date where we have an opportunity for community input. We would like to recommend that that be at either Cooper or Armstrong so that we have, we have more room, we have, you know, all of the things similar to what we did with that town hall. We'll have to do some things, thinking of logistics in terms of, does a hearing, is it also an official board meeting if it's a hearing? Okay, so we'll have to think about what that means for live streaming and some of that. So we've got some logistics to work out with that, but just wanted to get your impression and notion on, thumbs up on that, we go ahead and plan accordingly?
You see, one thumb, two thumb, three thumb, four thumb, no thumb?
No, I have no thumbs.
You have no thumbs?
Just, just doesn't matter, of course, now.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to plug into one here?
Can we pick one that has good parking?
In the winter, yes.
For a lot of people?
Either high school or the park, depending which one's available.
Yeah, we'll do one of the, we'll look, we'll start with looking at the dates for one of the high schools.
I'm missing.
Team, help me out, that's what I had in terms of next steps. Is there anything I'm missing or something else that you've thought about that we've discussed or wondered or needed?
I want to know, am I going to, am I going to get the information?
I heard the direction of the board was not until meeting time on the.
I admire your persistence.
You should keep trying, Kelly, because I hear, I hear the squeaky wheel gives the grease.
Okay then, we are done, thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you on Monday at 5 o'clock, it's likely before, get your buzzer finger ready.